To order at five oh three or five oh two P M. On Tuesday, October twenty first. I would ask Hallie to know roll call. And I would. Move on then to announcements. Just a minute, I can't find my agenda, somebody put papers in here that. Can you? Put your. Work session agenda. Thank you. I don't know where mine is. Thank you. I wrote on it. Thank you. So one announcement I have is that Mr. Simpson's daughter is getting married. And so he won't be with us tonight and Tashidra will be here probably for the village board meeting, but she's getting ready for a large event tomorrow night. So. With that, I will move to discussion items. And. With the first one is sanctioned organization definition, and this is for discussion, not not action, obviously. So Reese is not with us tonight, but we have Sam and he's my new hero.
I I am here virtually if anyone has any questions, but Sam will do an amazing job presenting.
Thank you. I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're getting some rest.
Thank you.
And I will note that last night, the Public Services Committee dealt with this issue. And I thought they had a good discussion and the presentation went well, so thank you guys.
Perfect, so we can get started this and kind of like Jane said, this discussion, I think really the only thing that we were looking for was maybe a little direction before we bring it back on the fourth, just so we could maybe start to update parts of the the policy. But we will get through, be going through some of these slides. So I'll kind of give a quick rundown of, because I know majority of you have heard sanction information in the past, but not everybody has, so just a quick little update on like the program and. Kind of how it runs, but potentially in the past, if you wanted to be considered a sanctioned organization, you had to submit an application, we would go through it, you had to be comprised of at least fifty percent Village of DeForest. Our tips participants on that team. And from there, you would then pay forty dollars for any games that you had, and you would pay a fifty dollar scheduling fee. So then, pretty much outside of that fifty dollars, you could practice as much as you wanted with no other rates being tacked on. So that was kind of how the program operated before. And that was something that had been in place, I think, when when I got here, but definitely when Reese was here too. So as we look back at the twenty twenty five sanctioned organizations. The high school has technically three teams, it would be the varsity softball team, JV softball and JV baseball. For these teams, they really don't have a lot of usage, the biggest piece of it is early in the year when they can't get on their diamonds. They'll use ours just to make sure they can get games and practices and is really the biggest piece for them. Windsor Heat softball had twelve teams through the pretty much the spring summers, their high usage period. DeForest area youth football had twelve teams, their higher use period is fall. And then we had four one-team organizations that. They're usually right around fifty fifty and they're a team of about twelve to thirteen kids each, but one would be Norseke Prime, one is Norseke Thunder, one is Norseke Elite, and then one is Norseke Summer Soccer. It's all, and then when it gets to fall ball. Windsor Heat had four teams, then Norseke Thunder did a small fall ball session, that was pretty much just practices. So within the Village of DeForest, when it comes to baseball softball fields, we have a total of eight fields. We have the two at Fireman's, two at Yahara, and then the four at the DeForest Quick Trip Athletic Complex. In addition to that, we have two long fields that we can use for soccer, football, a variety of different sports where we can use open space. And then those two long fields are primarily used by Daffel, who's youth football group. So when we look at users, we have devoted to forest recreation programs, so we have coed T-ball, rookie boys baseball, rookie girls softball, we do U-ten, U-twelve and U-fourteen. Girls softball, we do adult kickball. And then we do have a variety of other programs too that don't use diamond space, but use some of the long field space. And then we have the next one, which would be the sanctioned user groups, which is just all the user groups that we just went through. We do have adult softball leagues, they also use the diamond space. And then we do have general user groups, who majority of the time are using the weekend, but we do have some general user groups that will use weekdays here and there, and we work with them on scheduling when there's when there's openings. So right here kind of states, we talked a little bit about it before, but these are the requirements for the ordinances, so a sanction program. Show me in a league recreation program or other group officially recognized by the village as organized and operated to promote athletics without profit and more than fifty percent of whose membership is prized of Village of DeForest residents. So that is the current currently how the ordinance reads. And then for local adult leagues, it is show me a formal or informal group of adult athletic teams, at least one of which is comprised primarily of village residents, which reigns regularly scheduled competitions. And then as we look on this slide two, we can kind of see the the participants that were served in twenty twenty five. And this is primarily Monday through Thursday users, but devoted to forest programs served just a little bit over eleven hundred people. And then we have the sanctioned organizations who served four hundred and thirty-three, and then we have the adult softball leagues who serve two hundred and forty. So going into this too, and one big thing that we wanted to kind of touch base on is in the past, we've always had that fifty fifty, they have to have at least fifty percent Village of DeForest residents. There were two groups that were kind of grandfathered in on that, and if it was. Pretty much if we went really off that fifty percent, they would be excluded, so Windsor Heat would be a good example, they have a hundred and twenty participants. And if we stayed with the fifty fifty, they would likely not be able to use any of the fields anymore, and they would not be considered a sanctioned local organization. And this is kind of come, this comes to some of the things that we're going to talk about later and kind of where we're talking about making changes. And then another one would be the DeForest Area Youth Football League, who they have two hundred and sixty-five players who would then be affected. So that would be really almost it's eighty-nine percent of the program, the sanction program, it would be three hundred and eighty-five players out of four hundred and thirty that would be then affected who are in the the current program.
You say that again, same.
So if those two organizations no longer qualified, then that would be eighty-nine percent of our program that would no longer qualify. And it would be three hundred and eighty-five out of four hundred and thirty-three total players that would no longer qualify in the program. So then we can also look at the the field breakdown on the rental usage. So this is a breakdown of usage, so we see that the sanction groups, they had about thirty-nine point six percent of total usage. Our rep program said about the same, right around thirty-nine percent. The high school has one point nine percent other, which is generally those general user groups had fifteen percent, and then adult softball had three point one percent of the overall usage of the the fields. And then. This is kind of the next slide, so the village does subsidize a hundred thousand dollars in operating. So if we're looking on the funding and the field rentals and kind of what we're getting in on field rentals, we do have that hundred thousand dollars that the village subsidizes, which is fifty fifty-seven point eight percent of the funding. The other here, which would be thirty-five point six percent of the funds, those would be those general user groups that we talked about, primarily weekends, a lot of tournaments, we do have a few, like I talked about during the weekdays, that will pick up and pay full price to use the fields. Adult softball, they would then cover two point one percent of the funding, pretty close to what their usage rate was. And then the sanction groups would cover four point five percent of the funding. So in twenty twenty-four, based on some numbers that we looked at. The cost operate would be two hundred and twenty thousand. And then like if we wanted to try to get back to cost recovery. Per field per hour. Then it would look like we would really want to charge about forty-three, forty-four dollars per hour on the fields, if we were specifically trying to get back to cost recovery for every user in rental group. However, on here it does say the sixty-five dollars, so that would be based on most of the average rentals are an hour and a half, and that would be really, really the rate where we would be able to get back to like full cost recovery. And then we also did base the the recovery was based on prime hours and seasonal usage. So what we consider as the prime season would be from April to October thirty-first. And then really from on evenings, Monday through Thursday, from about four thirty to eight thirty P M are really the prime months, days and times that we consider as that, and then the weekends. But those are already used for tournaments, we have a pretty full tournament schedule every year, so. This is a chart that it shows the twenty twenty-four sanctioned organizations. So we have Group A, Group B, Group C, Group D. And this is really just a breakdown of, one, their payment is on the left, and then in the middle is the total hours they used. And then on the right is going to be based on their total payment, how much was used, what they then paid for. So we have some groups that they technically paid about ten ninety-eight an hour, which is still, it's very affordable, and then we have some that paid three dollars and change per hour. And really the biggest impact on that is how often they practice, so like we talked about before, they do pay that fifty dollar scheduling fee. And then after that, if you practice five times, it's going to be kind of a little bit more per practice, but if you practice a lot, it's going to really, really dwindle down that fee, it's going to dilute it. So those were the the twenty twenty-four numbers. In twenty twenty-five, we did have another group, so we have Group E on the bottom there, this is the the same exact chart, same breakdown. Where the total payment they paid this year is on the left, the total hours used are in the middle, and then it breaks down to to payment per hour on that right side. So we we have a group that paid about, on average, sixteen sixteen dollars per per hour, and then we have one that again was right around three dollars and fifty-one cents per hour on usage. This one is just a chart of all the other. Kind of some comparable complexes and then also communities that do some field rentals, while they don't have a complex that's comparable, they do offer field rentals in their parks. So everyone kind of does it differently, there's some on here that will do per hour, there's some that do per game. I would say the closest one that. Is close to us is going to be Culver Park and some or in Sock Prairie, and that's pretty much they modeled a lot of their pricing off of our pricing. Really, the only thing they do differently is they kind of give a break on tournament rates, which isn't really something that we're talking too much about today, but that's one difference in their model compared to ours. And then I'm I'm pretty sure in their model, I don't think they do, they don't have a sanction program, I don't think, I think it's standard rates for everybody, so just just one thing from there. And then, and the next thing, we're going to kind of get into some of the proposed changes. I know we we brought up to public service last night, so when we get to the last slide, I can kind of show what they recommended, but I can kind of go through the explanation and kind of the changes that we're we're thinking and we're recommending to start. So we were looking to change some of the criteria to be considered a sanctioned program, so. Well, neither Reese or I were here when this was all drafted up and kind of approved. We thought maybe the intent of it was to make it so that it was going to be able to serve as many people in the community as possible and as many kids in the community as possible. So when we went through and tried to make some of these changes, that's really the intent that we tried to tried to use and kind of what we tried to factor in. So as we go through this, it's gonna say non. Or kind of how we're looking to maybe make some changes in the sanction programs, one of the things would be, we will want a nonprofit status, so they'd have to be formally recognized and operating as a nonprofit organization. They would have to have open registration, that would be a big thing for us, so that anyone who's wanting to participate in that program is able to, and they're not being turned away. So that would be another thing that we would require for in the new sanction program that we're kind of talking about for those sanction groups is it has to be, has to be an open registration. And then the, one of the other things would be team requirements, so for an organization, we would hope that they oversee at least four teams, so it is a it is a bigger organization than. They're taking open registration, that's why they're a little bit bigger, but they're also working through like as a large organization, serving a lot of residents. And then also to for the participant base, we'd hope that they be primarily composed of youth who reside with or attend the school district, the DeForest School District. So that is one change, and previously it had been that fifty percent. And kind of the reason for that change and trying to serve as much youth as we can is, like I said before, if we did stay with that, there are some larger groups that would no longer, they they would not qualify. And we think if if they're at least in the school district, then they are within kind of our base, and we do have a thing when, I'll get to a future slide and can show you. But any of the non-residents would be required to pay a small resident or non-resident fee, kind of like our programming, but it offsets that, because I know we have talked about. Windsor contributing, and maybe they're not as interested in it, but this would at least their their residents would be kind of contributing at this rate. And then another thing for these groups is they would be insured, they would be required to have insurance and. Okay. Here we go. Maybe not. Okay. But then they would have to have liability insurance, and they would name us as an additional insured on their insurance. So those were the things that we were going through this process, that we think each group, in order to qualify to be a sanctioned team, would need to kind of hit, they would need to be able to chuck off all those boxes. So when we're looking at that, who would then be included if we did go with that model? So Windsor Heat would still be included. Windsor DeForest Baseball would be a new larger group that would then be included, and then DeForest Area Youth Football would still be included. So that's seven hundred and thirty-one youth that we would be able to serve. And then we do have the single teams who they wouldn't fall into that part of the sanction program anymore. But they wouldn't, they wouldn't not be able to get on fields, it wouldn't be not included in this, when we were looking through it, which it's on a later slide. And I'll talk more about it, but we do have something where they would fall down, they wouldn't have. The the rates as before, there'd be a little bit of an increase, but we would still be giving them at least fifty percent off of the the rental rates, which we thought was something that would be good for those groups. So that would just be kind of the one thing is, there would be like the seventy or seven hundred and thirty-one kids, it would be included, there would be forty in those single teams that would not be able to go at those rates. However, we would be still doing fifty percent off of our our normal rates for them with this model that we're proposing. And then this is going to show sanctioned program fees, so these are going to be. These are going to be the three bigger organizations we talked about. If we, we did go with what we had on the last slide, and they updated rates for that, so. Those three organizations, as in the past, they would pay their fifty dollar scheduling fee per team. We would have a ten dollar non-resident fee, so it would be based on school district, but however, if there is somebody that's a non-village resident, then they would be paying that ten dollar fee, and the organization would be covering that fee. And they could pick to cover it however they want in their registration, but they would have to owe us that money. And then their game fees would remain at forty dollars per game, which it always has been. The sanction groups have always been allowed to run a tournament as well, one of the groups has a has a tournament they run every year, the other or the other groups haven't taken us up on that offer, but it would be something we'd have to have a weekend open, we wouldn't kick an existing group to to give them a tournament weekend. So for those single teams, it would be excluded, this is kind of the slide that talks about where we would go with that. So we would then like to have them be considered as a local league, similar similar to adult softball, so. With the wordage or the verbiage that we would kind of want to change to, or would be looking to change it to, would be a local league, not adult local league anymore. But then it would be a league recreation program or other group recognized by the village is organized and operated, promoting athletics without profit and more than fifty percent of who is comprised by Village of DeForest residents. So that fifty percent still would stay in for the single teams. And then if they do get to that fifty percent, they would get thirty dollar practices. Which is like more than pretty much half off of our normal practice rate, and then same thing with like games, so they pay seventy-five dollars for a game, which it would be a jump. From what they had paid in the past, in the past, they'd paid forty dollars, but it still would be a fifty percent discount from our normal general rates. And then they would also have a discounted tournament rate option too. And then really, the one big thing that could affect one of these groups would be the practice rates, so like I talked about in the past, they'd pay fifty dollars for unlimited practices. It now would go to thirty dollars a practice in prime times, that's where more of these groups would potentially see that impact. So there's a group that doesn't practice a lot, there's going to be increase, maybe not as much, there's a group that practices a lot, they're going to see a bigger increase. One thing that we did when we were talking about this, we did reach out to the school district, and they actually allow local groups to to practice on the JV fields at no cost. So that would be another alternative for these groups where. They could go practice more there and still keep their rates down and still do games and everything with us. But just just one thing that we looked into and kind of information that we heard. So this is going to be. The updated fee for the single teams, so. What this shows is, this was twenty twenty-five payments, twenty twenty-five rental hours. And this was pretty much their payment per hour, so we already kind of went through this chart, and we were able to see it. The new parts of this chart would be the new proposed fees, so looking at here. Let's example, Group B, they practice a fair amount, not a ton, so their practice fees would go up. Two hundred and seventy dollars, and that's based on how much they practice, as were Group D. Their practice rates would go up about two thousand dollars, and this is all based on amount of practices they have throughout a season.
Yeah, so I can, I can add in here real quick, just because I have access to the report right now, is for Group D, that means they ran sixty-seven practices this year, so they were doing about two and a half practices a week. For the period of time that they had their season, which would include some fall ball. And then the next group, Group E, they had about thirty-four practices. So they were practicing a little under two times a week for their period of time.
And then really that third column two, it would then break down payment per hour, it's like we talked about here, there's a few groups that if they look at it per hour, someone is paying sixteen dollars, and then someone is paying three. With those proposed new rates, this is what the payment per hour would be, so someone's rates per hour get all the way up to thirty-three dollars, and then someone's would hover around about twenty-three, and then the other groups would be twenty-five dollars per hour. The other piece of this too, outside of the rates, was going to be the scheduling preference, so I know over the past few years, when we've, I feel like we've talked about rates, preferences pretty regularly year to year. Last year, we were bumped to the tier one for our programs, so for tier one with the proposals. It would be us, and then the school district, like we said, they use fields kind of a little bit here and there in the spring when they need to. Tier two would then be. Those those bigger groups that we talked about, like the Windsor Heat, Windsor DeForest Baseball, Daffel, they would fall into tier two. Usually with those tier-two groups, in the past, I've started to do a scheduling meeting, three or four years ago, when we had maybe three sanctioned teams, it used to be they would just submit their stuff, and no one would know who was wanting what, and then I would be going through the puzzle pieces, trying to make it work, which. Is not, it consumes a lot of time when you do it that way, and having to go back and ask people, hey, can you make this change, all that stuff? So what we did, we thought was a lot better use of their time and our time, was we started to schedule this meeting, everyone's in the same room, we're all there to say like, hey, I have these needs and I have these needs, how can we make these all work in everybody? So that is one thing that we do with the tier-two groups, and we found it to be helpful. And then. The change would be that those single teams would then bump down to tier three. And they would be in the same, essentially the same tier as a GRB. So after we would go through into all the scheduling with those big groups, tier three would then be able to get some usage, and we could schedule them in where we can outside of those, like really. Kind of our thing was getting those really big groups on the books, it's usually a little bit more beneficial on the scheduling process, it makes that a little bit easier. And then my understanding too is that GRB is in that tier when the complex was getting approved and built, GRB was part of the conversation, and they were allowed to be in that tier, and they're a frequent user of the. The complex, a lot of their usage really is on the weekends, but like I said before, they do have a little bit of weekday usage, and they do pay full full price for it, and they kind of just fit in here and there where they where they can. But they would be considered in tier three, along with those single teams, and then tier four would just be general users. So it also does have on here a timeline of kind of when we when we want info and how how those groups can start booking and how early in a year they can start booking facilities. So. On this slide, there were there were three options, and I can kind of talk to you a little bit more about what we talked about in public service last night. So one of the first option would be that we'd make no changes to the policy, Windsor Heat would then not qualify, Daffel would then not qualify, and Windsor DeForest Baseball would not qualify. So it'd be about seven hundred and thirty kids that would no longer qualify, or wouldn't be approved in the new program. Those forty-eight single teams would likely still all qualify, as long as they didn't see. Pretty much like a one or two to force players leave this year, and then not be able to get a new to force player in to keep them at that fifty percent base. Option two was make the recommended changes to the sanction program and the local league definitions, so that would be. Having pretty much like you're a nonprofit, all your kids are within the DeForest Area School District, you have open registration. Have more than four teams, and you have insurance with us listed on it. have more than four teams and you have insurance with us listed on it. That would be those three big organizations like we talked about. They have the same rates as before. Their tier two scheduling, those single teams would then drop to tier three of scheduling, their rates would increase. And then their recommendations are there, what they would have to still check off would be the fifty percent residency and the insurance piece. And then the third option was make recommended changes to the sanction programs only. So last night, I know this is a lot of information and we knew that it was a public service last night too and it's a lot to take in. But when we talked about it last night, we had a lot of really good conversations and we did have someone from the single team that joined us and we even talked to him on the phone this past week. And their big ask was that maybe there was a potential grace period on rates. Originally, we didn't we didn't mean any ill on the timeline of bringing this, but we were we weren't in the know that apparently baseball trials all happen in July. So they then wouldn't be able to find a team for next year because they're saying if their their rates increased, they might not be able to run their programs like they have in the past. And then those kids might not have a backup plan because trials have already happened. So one thing that they did bring up that we thought was more than fair and is listed on here was for the single teams to kind of have a grace period on the fees. They would still fall into everything else, we would still keep that new verbiage the same, scheduling tiering the same, but just a grace period on the fees since it is something that would affect them this next year. Last night when we were in public service, they had the recommendation of a two-year grace period for the fees and then it would have been option two with a two-year grace period. So that's kind of our recommendation and then what we got from public service last night. Reese, think there's anything that I'm I'm missing, I could have missed something, but.
No, I think Sam did a great job explaining everything. We're happy to answer questions. And again, I think just our focus was trying to figure out what the intent of the program was supposed to be and how we could serve the most taxpayers for the community. And we do feel like option two provides the most for all groups. And I I think too, we would maybe just want a little clarification on, you know, if we're giving the grace period to these existing teams, you know, that they can't create new teams in the future and continue to kind of fall underneath that. If that's, you know, ultimately a a direction that the board is hoping for us to pursue. But I I do feel like a change does need to be made to make sure that we're providing for the most kids for the community and still being fiscally responsible.
Thank you. Let me open this up to questions now, if you guys are okay with that. And I will also ask Jan, did you have anything you wanted to add from last night?
We did have a lot of conversation and some good things came out of it. And the whole committee had decided that, you know, we're along with what Reese and Sam are suggesting and option two. And also looking at the grace period for teams that are involved right now. Besides that, I think that was pretty much it.
Are there comments or questions? I know people are stunned. Let me just say that I like the idea of the grace period. I think I go along with what Tashidra was saying last night. I think baseball and organized sports are very important for our kids. And it's confusing to them because they're all in the same school district. And so why can my locker mate play and I can't? So that just strikes me as reality. And so I'm glad that we could find a way to keep them involved and perhaps get Windsor more involved in. I will work on that soon. But I think that's a good thing. I wondered if, do we ever use Ziggy field?
We do not use that field. I I think I'm going to let Bill talk on that one.
Yeah, so that was developed privately and then I think it was conveyed over to GRB.
Yeah, so I think kind of like Bill said, GRB is the main facilitator. I live right by that field, so I would say that GRB uses a lot. I know there are high school programs that use it. Like I think it's Edgewood's Home Field, if I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong though. And I know sometimes too, like the high school will use it when they have, when their fields aren't, they're not able to get on them.
It would also be good if we can use the school practice fields. I think I think that's a good idea where we can, so. Yes, Chan.
Yeah, so I did have a question about fields. It was great that you guys called the schools and we found out about the JV fields. But one thing that didn't come up for a question last night, which I thought more of, is the Windsor Park has their four four ball diamonds. How do they handle practices for those? Do we know?
I can I can speak on that. So Windsor DeForest Baseball actually has a agreement with Windsor. So they do, I believe, I believe they do all the maintenance, other than maybe mowing for those fields. And then they use those fields for their practices and games.
Thanks, Reese.
Anybody else, Alicia or Colleen? Being quiet and they're writing, so I will take that as a good thing. Well, I think that option two probably is where we all would be. And are you there, Colleen? How about you, Alicia?
Yeah, I am. I think it's, I think it's best if we can still keep the majority of people included. So I was just curious, the two-year grace period versus, did you guys talk about last night? One year versus two year, because it sounded like one year still captured everyone, so they don't have to. I think as you said, like they're, I don't know the exact words, but you said find new teams or areas. But two years gives them more time for funding or?
So last night, our our original recommendation was the one-year grace period. When we kind of all started talking last night and we did have a few attendees that are are parts of those single teams. And then with the Public Service Committee, their recommendation was a two-year. And I think the intent was just to give those teams that much more time to figure out their situation. If they're going to continue to try to operate this themselves and raise their costs and tell their families they need to do that or if they're going to have to go find an alternative place and play like a GRB or Silver Sluggers. But I think I think that's really the only difference of why the the two-year was the recommendation. But either one, I think, is a good idea and it gives the group time to plan. I would say, I think for sure, two of our single teams are probably going to be aged out in two years. So that that could have been also a little bit of a factor into the two-year grace period. Because I think we have one that's going to age out this year and one that's going to age out after next year. And then the other two, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure on when they're aging out.
Well, I think I think that is actually kind of the the two-year was that almost all the groups would be aged out at that point, based off of Norski Thunder, I think, was the youngest group. They were the group that came and spoke last night and they would age out in two years.
And I think it's a reasonable grade for me. So anyway, you guys got what you need from us, I think. We have other things on the agenda for this meeting, so we'll move on unless there's any other comments.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Item four point two, discussion regarding purchasing policy. Mr. Chang, this came to you late today. They had a medical noise there.
Okay, first, I apologize for not getting this into the to the packet. We did have a memo on there, but not the actual draft. And it was still under under review. So this issue comes about every so often. We, as part of our budget, we approve an allocation or enumeration of funding for its cost that we anticipate the next year. However, within that year, as contracts come up, there's been some confusion as to whether a contract needs to come before the board, who signs the contracts, if they're, you know, standard contracts or not. And so we wanted to draft a policy and the purpose of the policy is to service a uniform standard and procedures to be followed by all village departments, boards, commissions and the village board in the purchases of supplies, materials, equipments and contractual services. Not only does this update the current ordinance, but states that anything above five hundred would needs to come back to the board. We just can't operate that way. But it is a part of our strategic plan to identify areas of weakness, particularly practices, procedures that don't have a policy and to update that. So as you go through this this document, we try to set language on goals and objectives, definitions, so that everyone's on the same page. And then the real meat of the policy lives in the the policy section itself. So it provides authorization after it's been budgeted to first the village administrator, finance department, the department heads, and then control over petty cash. And each of those has its its different amounts of approvals with the village administrator and the the finance department covering from five thousand to twenty-five thousand. Department heads not to exceed five thousand. And then we also have in here a petty cash policy in where where each of the departments are dealing with that that day-to-day transaction. Within it, we also talk about different types of contracts. So purchasing procedures for construction projects are are required by state statute. So we wanted to reflect that in our policy, particularly in receiving formal bids and or formal quotes. And then what we did was we reflected that in non-construction contracts too. So anything over twenty-five thousand would be required to come back to the village board. And anything between that five thousand to twenty-five thousand would then be able to be signed by the village administrator and with the finance department in five thousand for department heads and so on and so forth. We then talk about other practices, so purchasing practices that have developed over time. First, we talk about purchases in repetitive nature. So these are things that we buy in bulk, so chemicals, things like that. We then talk about equipment purchasing. You've heard Carol and I talk about the equipment replacement fund, which was created I believe two years ago now. And this is to try to balance equipment that is repeating or can be purchased in large groups. There was a question, had been questions about, you know, what fits into the operational budget versus what fits into capital improvement. And we've seen a lot of inconsistency by utilizing group purchases. I had one time to meet the capital improvement cost floor. And so we just wanted to clarify that. Joint purchasing, we do sometimes with other agencies. And then really talking about surplus property. We've really taken advantage of that over the last two years and they've seen significant revenues off of surplus property. So again, you know, this starts a policy. I'm happy to to answer any questions that you you have. The intention is to give you some time to review this and we will bring it back up in a future meeting. The idea is that, well, we would propose to amend the ordinance so that it defers to the policy and not necessarily a strict number or process in the ordinance itself. Just provides us a little bit more flexibility. Then I'll take any questions.
Questions? It's been a while since we reviewed this policy, so I'm glad glad to see it. When I went through it, I didn't see anything out of line or it caused me concern, but I would ask others. Jan, no, everybody's saying good job. Alicia, are you good with it?
I am. I just have a general question about like our surplus property. Just how do how does the general public know about the sale of those items currently when we sell them?
So bigger items in general go to Wisconsin Surplus, which is an auction site and they advertise it, I think statewide, that these things are up and available, so they're made available for that. Smaller items, I don't know how we would handle that if there's, like, we've got laptops or other things that we want to market, I don't know how we would make those available. We'd have to make it, I'm not, I've not seen this, so I don't, I'd have to dig into that. But the bigger items are done on Wisconsin Surplus.
And then Judge usually reports to us when they they get revenue from that, so. Thank you. All right. Well, if there's no other questions, I think we're good and we like what's in the policy. Discussion and review budget policies. This is Carol. Now, we've seen this previously and we've had a couple of chances chances to review it. But I'll let her walk us through quickly and then if you have questions, we can entertain those.
Yes, we did present the actual policies and talked in general about what's in those policies back in, I believe, August. So we were just giving you an opportunity to ask questions or make any recommended changes if you want to. We have not made any changes this year to the policies, but they are included as part of the budget document. They're the the final pages right behind the budget. So the they do get approved as the budget gets approved. So we just wanted to make sure and put them back in front of you one more time in case there are any changes you want to make before they get approved as part of the budget.
Thank you. I would say that we should ask questions now if we have them, we're about to move to the budget. So it's a good time for us to review this and be aware. I didn't have changes, but then I've been part of this for a long time, so I would ask, Alicia, anything jump at you? Colleen? So I think in general, Carol, it's good that we saw it and to know that we need to review these before we go through the budget. So if you haven't fully read it, even those who aren't here, they should because it's important for us. So with that, I thank you guys and I'll move quickly to some of the updates. Let's go through them. Bill, do you have something?
I do not.
I hope you had a good vacation. We're thinking about you. Finance update? Police department update, Chief Olson?
Yeah, good evening. Two quick things. Last week, Tuesday, Officer Jared Coughlin was honored down at the State Capitol. I know several of the board were there. I know several of the board were there as well. As the first responder of the year for Assembly District 42, Representative McCarville called me and wished to nominate him for that. So it was a really a very nice ceremony. We'll have more discussion and things with that at the next board meeting for you all. And the other one's an unplanned announcement, but late yesterday, we were notified of a missing person. It was actually a sheriff's department case. The gentleman was just located alive, I believe, in the village. The, the details are still developing pretty quick. But he's being treated by EMS and potentially to a hospital. I don't, like you say, have all that, but he was located safely. So we called in quite a few resources of our own. He was last seen in the village. We tracked him to a certain area and were able to locate him. So a good outcome hopefully there. And I just wanted to give you that as it's a developing thing.
Thank you. And we're all glad to hear that. It's, it's just good news. So. All right, public services update, Mr. Blau?
Yep. Highway V continues to be a project moving along as fast as we can. Hopefully that will be done early part of November. We were hoping to have that section of V open to Stevenson. We got delayed with some wet weather, painting opportunities. We're not quite right for centerline striping to make it safe and available. And then Mr. Manhole had to come in and do their stuff. So they're working through that. We've had dry weather and we hit every obstacle in the world. Now we should have no obstacles and we got wet weather coming in. So we're pushing as fast as we can. Reminder, CV is closed probably another two weeks plus with that culvert invert that they're putting in there. But that should be unofficial in the long run. The leafback truck started. We're on the run through the village. We can get through the village about this time of year in two days or so. The leaves are starting to fly a little further and faster and they're more colorful. So they'll be falling faster and that leaf truck will be getting its workout. Then I just want to commend my guys, Metal View Retention Ponds, if you know where that is. It's off of Lexington. There's two ponds back there. They're roughly 30 years old. They were put in sometime after 1995. We withdrew 230-plus truckloads of cat tails, sod, sediment, other things that's been there. And it's really improved the look of that and will drastically improve the, the operation of that retention pond. Just removing all that stuff dropped to two to three feet. So there'll be a greater capacity for that. But that's the purpose of those. And every once in a while, we got to get in there. And I think all those residents we've heard from are really excited and happy for it. But my guys did a great job and I'm super proud of them being able to take that job on and do it.
Thank you for doing that. That'll, that'll be a big deal. And where does the water flow from to get into that retention pond?
Well, it comes off of, I think that's Hilltop Drive. That'll be those. It's all road, surface road water. That's where that comes from, right? And it's transferred into there. So.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, anything else? And, and again, congratulations to your team. They've been working really hard. So. Community development update, Mr. Alon?
Just wanted to highlight a couple of things at the legislative level. Last week, there were a number of bills that moved through the assembly related to housing. A lot of the board movement there, but as we've kind of talked about, trying to make headway on single-family home development and planning in the village. One in particular is catching my attention. That's AB 451, which would allow for communities to create a residential TIF district to help out with public infrastructure development. So again, just moving through the assembly eventually that'll hopefully get its day on the Senate. But I'll keep you posted as that moves forward.
Thank you. All right. How about Callie, Administrative Services update?
I just wanted to let everybody know, so far we have received 12 applications for the vacant trustee seat. We did have 13, however, one candidate withdrew his application over the weekend. So, and the deadline is still Friday at 2:00 PM.
Thank you. That's very nice. Many times we've been begging for applicants for things. So that's great to know. Recreation and community enrichment. Sam, do we have anything?
Yeah, I have a few things that I can kind of go through quick. I'll keep it a lot shorter than my, my last thing I went through. But one of the things that, or a few things that Tricia's been working on lately. One is preparing and submitting the, the JEM grant. So that would be for the DeForest Dragon Arts Fair, and that helps support marketing efforts. And that is due by November 1st. So she's worked on that and we'll get that submitted. Also, I know last time we were here, or last night we talked about it. The farmer's market did come to a close last week. So Tricia's been working on sending out emails, kind of targeting vendors, but also the general public. And just trying to get their feedback of pros, cons, maybe what are some changes that can be made, all that kind of, kind of good stuff. She'd also been working on coordinating sponsorships for the holiday tree lighting, candlelight hike, and then some of our youth sports, winter youth sports, because that's going to be around the corner before we know it. And then a few other things too. This past weekend at the athletic complex, we did host our end of the season, like regional flag football tournament. So we had 49 teams from across 11 different communities. For, we started at 8:30 in the morning. We're done by 3:00. And during that time, we got in 58 games and seven brackets for fourth, fifth graders. Were the age groups that we hosted. So it was a good day. We got good weather and everything went well. This upcoming weekend, we have the final tournament of the year at the, the athletic complex. It's going to be a softball tournament. So we'll run that and that'll be the last tournament of the year. And then just kind of one or two other things. We did hold the first class of ice skating lessons this past weekend, or this past Sunday at DeForest Yards. So that's up and rolling. I know we had a, a lot of kids that were participating. So it was good to see. They were all out on the ice on Sunday. And then, yeah, we're just kind of keeping busy, pre-planning for some of the winter programs and the winter sports that we're going to be offering here in next weeks to months.
Great, thank you. All right. Any questions by anyone? Otherwise, we will entertain any other business to hopefully come before the committee? If not, I have a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna take a time is it really? All right. I will call the, to order the regular village board meeting on October 21st, 2025 at 6:05 PM. We have clocks that are different here, so I'm always looking for the one that I think is right. So with that, I would ask Callie to note roll call. And I would make two quick announcements. One, part of the reason to she'd resonate here is tomorrow night is her organization, the Women's Resource Center's 10th anniversary party at the Goodman Center. And it's quite an accomplishment. So I commend her because she's pulled that organization together from nothing. So she is busy getting that ready. And as we noted at the last meeting, Jim's daughter is getting married. So that's where he is. I would ask Callie, no, Callie, I'm sorry. I looked at Colleen. It's a C, you know? Yeah. You should imagine my grandchildren, at least I don't call them by their dogs' names. All right, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, with that, I would ask if either items need to be separated out in the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move to public appearances. So we have a few tonight. So when I call your name, I'll ask that you come forward, turn on the mic. And you have to talk closely to the mics here. So give it some love. And I would also note that we have a three-minute limit. I know it feels limiting sometimes, but sometimes we have lots of people and meeting work to get through as well. So with that, I would begin with Rhonda Meinholtz? Yeah.
All right, I see the green light on, so I assume that's good. I actually have two completely different topics to talk about tonight, so I'm hoping that you'll give me a little bit of grace on the time period. The first and foremost is thank you to this community for the tremendous
I'm sorry, Rhonda, I don't mean to interrupt you. Have you state your name and address for me?
Rhonda Meinholtz, 6964 County Road I, DeForest. I want to thank the community for the tremendous efforts to try to locate L. Johnson today. It was incredible. I don't know him at all, but I have family members that do. And I was fortunate enough to be available today, so I went out and joined the search party. It was crappy weather. Not a fun day to be outside. About an hour and a half ago, I looked like a drowned rat. It was amazing. And I was in one of the groups when we got word from the sheriff's department that he had been found alive and safe. And it was tremendous. So thank you to everyone who may have taken part in that because we don't often get to see this kind of outcome. And it was really incredible to just be a part of that. It takes a village. So I wanted to say that first. That was not part of my plan tonight. Good evening. As I have mentioned, my name is Rhonda Meinholtz. I am a 24-year resident of the town of Vienna. And I'm speaking to you regarding the data center proposed by QTS. As you may or may not know, back in July of this year, QTS announced that they were exploring a multi-billion dollar data center spanning over 615 acres of prime farmland in the town of Vienna. At that time, the town of Vienna was in the process of updating their comprehensive plan. And until that plan was updated and approved by the town board, the town could not entertain any such project which QTS was made aware of. This was apparently considered a roadblock by QTS. And while QTS had originally agreed with all of the landowners who are involved in this project, that they would not pursue the project unless the land would remain in the town of Vienna, their stance on that quickly changed. In September, QTS reached out to the landowners requesting them to change the original agreement and to now allow QTS to explore the idea of having this property annexed into the village of Windsor or the village of DeForest. My understanding is that the village of Windsor quickly rejected any such interest in this project. And while I do not believe there has been a formal application filed with the village of DeForest to have this land annexed into DeForest, it has been brought to my attention that behind the scenes, QTS is tapping on shoulders of both DeForest and Dane County officials to find out what the probability would be of getting that done. This concerns all of us who live in the town of Vienna. Not only do we have concerns regarding what a project like this would do to our wildlife, natural resources, energy costs, property values, rural character, et cetera. But losing this amount of land to the village of DeForest or any municipality would be detrimental to our survival as a township. In speaking with residents of the village of DeForest over the past couple of weeks, it has been very clear that most residents had no idea that this project had even been proposed in our area, much less that it could possibly end up being in the village of DeForest if that land were to be annexed into the village. This is very disappointing to hear. As taxpayers, the residents of both the town of Vienna and the village of DeForest deserve transparency from our elected officials at all times. The town of Vienna has been very transparent. They needed to get their comprehensive plan approved before they could entertain this project. And while that did take a few months to finalize, anyone who's ever served on a town board and/or a planning commission knows full well that these things take time, as they should. Anytime a project like this is rushed into, it should be concerning to everyone involved. I am asking the village of DeForest to be fully transparent regarding this project effective immediately. No discussion should be happening.
Your time, your time is done. Your three minutes.
Could I continue being I had two topics? I'm almost done.
We did restart your three minutes when you started this topic.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Chris McDonald. Please join us.
Good evening. Wrote this one down. So I'm right at three minutes. Don't cut me off, Kelly. Good evening. My name is Chris McDonald. I live at 4,000 Longfellow Court in the village of Windsor. Tonight, I'm asking the board to take the first step in restoring fluoride to DeForest water. Over the past year, a majority of DeForest has made their support for fluoride clear. In the spring election, candidates who supported water fluoridation received a strong showing of support from voters. And in the recent recall election, voters again supported the only candidate who favored revisiting this topic. Residents have done their part. These election outcomes leave no doubt where the majority of DeForest stands. Now is the time to move forward. No one's asking for an immediate change, just a first step. This board should instruct staff to collect and present the information required to make an informed decision. That means understanding costs and identifying potential grant funding so residents don't have to bear all of those costs. Significant funding is available now and expires soon. Acting promptly ensures DeForest does not miss out on these funds. As this information is gathered, it's essential that the process be objective and solutions-oriented. This work should be overseen to ensure staff addresses any challenges constructively. Residents deserve confidence that the findings reflect fact and not individual preference. Taking this next step does not commit the board to any outcome. It simply ensures that when the time comes to make a decision, that decision is well-informed. It shows that this board is proactive and responsive. DeForest has waited patiently to see this topic resolved. By instructing staff to begin this review, this board can demonstrate its listening and ready to turn a public mandate into a path forward. Please put this as a discussion topic on the next agenda for the November 4th meeting. Just one last note. I know a few in this room and this community are tired of hearing from me because I'm not a DeForest resident. I do live in the village of Windsor, something I've always been open about with this body. As an organizer for both DeForest and Windsor, it's my responsibility to speak up when residents aren't being heard and to hold local government accountable to the people they serve. I've knocked on thousands of doors in DeForest over the past three years, thousands. And what I'm saying tonight isn't just my personal opinion. It reflects what a majority of your constituents have shared with me directly. I hope this body is thoughtful enough not to dismiss this message simply because of who's delivering it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next speaker is Nancy Quirk. Did I say that right? If it's green, it's on.
There goes. Okay. Good evening, President Wilkman and trustees. My name is Nancy Quirk, and I live at 906 Pheasant Lane in DeForest, where I'm, I am currently retired. I'm addressing you tonight to formally request that you put the agenda, as Chris said, on our, on your next meeting, November 4th, to reinstall the fluoridation system of the village's water supply. In addition, to begin again, providing water with a point seven part per million fluoride to our residents. My background is that I'm a civil engineer, have 36 years of experience in the drinking water industry in Madison. I'm, I'm sorry, in Wisconsin. I was an engineer at Madison Water Utility for 15 and a half years. I was head of the engineering I was head of the engineering at Waukesha Water for nine and a half years, and I was general manager of the Green Bay Water Utility for 11 years. As general manager, I was appointed to the National Drinking Water Advisory Council to EPA, where we met in Washington, and we discussed safe drinking water regulations. During my tenure as general manager in Green Bay, an individual, the same individual who came to DeForest to try to get fluoride out of the system, tried to convince our common council to remove fluoridation three different times while I was general manager. Each time, we countered our opponent with accurate scientifically-accepted studies that clearly stated the benefits of community water fluoridation without harm to public health. I moved to DeForest last October. I was unaware that this issue had been put on the village's agenda. And when I learned that the village voted to... And I was extremely upset when I had learned that the village voted to stop the fluoridation. I have contacted the Department of Health and spoken to their fluoridation professional about getting DeForest back up and running. She was extremely excited to hear this. I asked her about grants for us. She said that we recently closed the grant applications for this year, but there was still funding available for the current budget year. She was hoping to get it back open again and wanted me to keep her updated on what the village decided, because they would be willing to work with us. This grant money would need to be used by the close of the budget cycle in July of 2026. She then said that the forest could also apply for the next year's funding if we needed more, so we could do it in phases if we needed to. But she was talking in grants of $5,000 to $25,000, $30,000. I believe that for the village to be the best position to receive this funding, though, we need to act soon. I wanted to let you know also that I assisted with the petitions for the recall earlier this year. During that process, I had a number of residents ask us to put fluoride back on the water. One person that I knocked on the door said, hey, will you put fluoride back in the water? I'll sign it if you will. So I want to thank you for your time, and that's.
Thank you, Nancy. First name, David. Second name, Roth. David, are you here? I don't see him. Do you? I don't see him online. All right, well, David spoke last night at Public Services on the sanction program. So we will note that he was wanting to tell us how he felt. So with that, we will move on then with our agenda. And I thank everyone for coming out in this rain, so. Alicia. Yeah, I won't lose it. Thank you. All right. We're going to move. There are no presentations listed, so we're going to move on to old business, item eight. And the first item is item 8.1, Presentation of the Full 2026 Budget, which Carol will be glad to be done with, I'm sure.
Oh, we're not done with it yet. So we started last week with the general fund and a couple of the special project funds that do have some tax dollars that help support it. Now this week, we're going to talk more about the rest of the special funds and the utility funds and all the other funds that don't really have any tax impact, so to speak. They all have kind of their own funding sources. Makes them a little easier to work through. There isn't as much necessarily to talk about. Each of the special funds you'll find in the budget document that was in your packet, it has a little synopsis at the top of each of those pages that sort of explains why that fund was created, what its purpose is, and, you know, kind of explains why we have that fund, why it exists. There aren't a lot of major changes happening within those special funds. They're pretty routine from year to year. So as you go through those, you can certainly let me know if you have any questions. But I thought I'd just point out a couple of notable changes for 2026. The Park Construction Fund, we do have some park projects planned for 2026, and Judd had talked about those when we went through the capital improvement plan. So we do have some park projects planned for '26, and we're going to use some money from the Park Development Fund to help cover some of those costs. The Promotion, Recreation, and Events Fund, we did talk about this one a little bit last time because there is a little tax funding that helps support that fund. But I thought I would point out that we have added in there for '26 some room tax revenue, since we are anticipating some hotels that will now generate that room tax revenue. So we have some revenues coming into that fund, but 70% of that is getting designated for tourism activities. So there's also an expense that comes in at the same time that offsets a lot of that revenue. But we do get 30% of it that gets to stay in the fund. So those are some new things for '26. And then we have a fund called the CDA Contracted Labor Fund. That fund was set up specifically because we had two employees that were village employees, but 100% of their time was spent working on CDA projects. So the CDA reimbursed us for their costs, so we put that in a special fund. That fund is set to tie out to zero basically every year. Whatever our costs are, we get reimbursed. It ends up being a zero balance at the end of the year. We've had some pretty major changes happening in the CDA since that fund was created. When one of those employees left, we decided instead of replacing the employee, we'd hire a management company to manage Jefferson Square. That was a major change. And then this past year, now we've sold the building at 509 North Main, which was our primary public housing building. So that was another major change that has happened. But because the CDA is planning on moving forward with constructing a new building, we are still going to have the employee, and we're still going to have projects that need to be managed. The CDA is going to continue to reimburse the village, but it's just going to change a little bit on where the funding is coming from and how I coded it in the account. So instead of Jefferson Square and public housing kind of paying for those costs equally, we now have the redevelopment fund covering a lot of the costs, because now we're really going to be focusing more on the building of the new, the construction of the new building. So it's just a little bit different in how it's coded within the fund. We also have some changes, I think, as to how the, how much the CDA might be reimbursing us, because we have hired an outside management company and we've sold one of the major buildings. We don't internally, the administrative and the finance staff, don't have as much work that's needed to do on the CDA right now. So Alex is going to talk later about potentially reducing some of the fees for the CDA. So because we have less revenue coming in or anticipate less revenue coming in, we've also had to shift some of the costs out of that fund, which pushes some of it back to the general fund, which has changed a little bit how we see things happening in the general fund. And I'll talk about that also at a later point. But that Fund 290 is just kind of shuffling around a little bit, just because the CDA is changing so much. Then moving on to the debt service funds, those are pretty straightforward. It basically just depends on what our payments are for 2026. We just obviously have to count for payments that are coming up and what's coming due. We do show in the memo a little chart that shows the limits. The state sets limits on how much our debt, how high we can go with our debt. And then the village has actually set policies that are even more strict than what the state allows. And I just would like to show you every year that we are staying well within those limits that have been set by those policies. And then the Capital Projects Fund, as I said, we talked about the capital projects that are expected for 2026. But as you can see within that fund, we have $14.8 million worth of projects planned. But as usual, most of those projects fall within TIF districts, or they are covered by a special revenue funds or by utility funds. So the taxpayers are only responsible for $3.9 million of those projects. And if everything is approved as it's laid out, we will plan to borrow for that. And then within the TIF districts, we always have, it's always very fluid. You never really know what opportunities are coming. Those projects are constantly changing. But one of the things that's kind of nice right now, things are actually slowing down because several of our funds have already reached their expenditure period deadline. So really, seven, eight, and nine are the last kids that still have ongoing projects planned. So it is getting to be a little more manageable as far as what's happening within those other funds. And then we get into the utility funds. We do have a water rate study, as I've mentioned a couple of different times. We have that study is in the PSC's hands right now. They are reviewing it. We've been getting questions, so I know they're looking at it. But I do not have the final say yet from them as to what they're going to recommend for our water rates. So just waiting to hear the final word on that. The sewer utility, we are in the process right now, working with Baker Tilly to do a sewer study. Historically, what we've been finding is because Madison Metropolitan Sewage District increases their rates so much every year, that typically ends up being what they recommend we do on our end, is just push those costs through. We have not needed to actually increase our rates in the last year or two, but we'll see what comes out of that study. I anticipate it'll just be similar to past, where we just need to pass through those costs from MMSD. And then the stormwater utility, there's again another chart here in your memo. We have historically recommended doing a minimum increase of $3 per equivalent runoff unit. One runoff unit is like an average household. So $3 a year is about what we've been recommending in terms of an increase, just to make sure we stay ahead of inflation. This year, looking at the forecast, I am basically recommending we just hold rates steady. I think that we'll be okay this next year. We should basically like break even, but that's still going to leave us with over $500,000 in our reserve at year end. And our policy basically says we want to hold a reserve of about three months of operating expenses plus $35,000 of capital reserve. And if you calculate that out, as long as we have over $350,000 in our reserve, that should be sufficient, based on our policy. So if we have over $500,000 at the end of the year, we're in good shape. So I'm just recommending we hold rates steady for stormwater. Those are the highlights of what's in your packet. One of the things I do need to go over is things are very fluid right now. We are learning new things every day. So keeping this budget up to date and current is challenging at this time of the year. So we have already had a few changes since I put this in your packet last Thursday. And they don't end up being much in total, but I just want to point out the fact that there are a few things that have still changed since you received this document last week. We did get a slightly lower rate on our health insurance, so that's good. We saved a little bit there. We also did find some spots within our technology budget that we felt we could lower, so that helped a little. But then, as I said, Alex is going to talk to you about some changes with the CDA, and he's going to recommend or request that we be looking at reducing the fee that CDA pays us. So that means less revenue coming in, which meant having to shift a few costs around. So in the end, it all worked out to about a $10,000 difference from what was originally in your package, what I'm now seeing as kind of an updated version. So what I handed out to you when you walked in tonight was basically just the public hearing notice document. And as you see, compared to the previous one, it has hardly changed at all. The mill rate is exactly the same, and the percentage increase to your existing homeowners is still around 1.95%. So it's just under 2%, which was similar to what you saw in the document that was in your packet.
Right.
So we will, you know, continue to update things as we learn, as we learn new information, but we will keep it within this general range. It still takes advantage of our full expenditure restraint costs. You know, the increase that we're allowed to do within the expenditure restraint program, we're still going to take advantage of that, but keep the impact to the homeowners under 2%. So the version I handed out tonight will be the one that we are requesting be approved for the public hearing notice.
For the public hearing?
For the public hearing notice, yeah. This will be the version that we use for the public hearing notice.
I'm bold. I don't hear anything, guys. So, so right now, on this item, though, it's simply the presentation, and then later on, we'll be voting on the public hearing. Let me also note, as part of this budget package, are the policies we looked at a while ago. So when we're approving the budget, we'll also be approving those policies. See? That's why we brought them to you.
But remember that tonight, you're not approving the budget. You're simply saying we can move forward with the public hearing. So you will have the opportunity to still ask questions or make changes to those policies, should you choose to.
So that's the next item, item 8.2. So any questions on the budget? Carol, that's a lot of work, and we all appreciate it. Bill, are you trying to say something? Okay. I couldn't tell if he had the microphone or the mouse, so, okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that, and health insurance was good news. It's not that way for all organizations right now. So, including my health. All right, let's move on then to item 8.2, which is the discussion and possible action to set the public hearing date for 2026 for the budget. And so this is the item we're going to be asking you to take action on. And the date you're looking at is?
I believe the meeting night is November 18th.
November 18th. And I just remind people, going much later than that causes a problem for the staff to get the tax bills out. And while we love the community, we need to get the tax bills out, so. So is there any discussion or question? Everybody okay with using this budget to do that on? So I would entertain a motion to set November 18th as our hearing date for the budget.
I'll make a motion to set November 18th as the public hearing date for the budget.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a second. Any further comment? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed. Motion carries. Thank you, Carol. It was a good process this year, just like it was getting to be every other year. But, you know, you met with all of us individually, you brought it in sections to the board, and so it's been real helpful to spoon-feed us on the budget, so thank you. All right, here we go. Item 9.1, Discussion and Possible Action to amend the motion regarding the process of filling vacancies in the office of the village of trustees. I'm going to let Bill handle this, but I am in agreement with what everything he's saying, so.
So at the last meeting of the village board, you set the process with a lot of parameters in regards to how this process is going to look like and how long the term for this seat was going to be. And it currently stands, it's intended that this seat would be appointed until the 2026 election, and then there will be a special election to fill the seat until the remainder of that term in 2027. I believe at the time, there was a question asked whether or not one person can fill or can run in both those seats or those races. We did reach out to WEC, W-E-C, and confirm that one person can run for both seats. We believe that that would cause a lot of confusion in that not only during the nomination process whereby residents will, can sign up to three candidates in the regular race, and then one candidate in the special election. But on the back end of that, then there's due diligence that we need to be careful and ensure that the signatures are correct and not duplicated. So that causes a challenge there. Additionally, if a person runs for both seats and wins both seats, they can choose the seat that they want to be placed in. And so at that time, it would unfortunately leave a seat open, thus requiring an appointment at that time, which leaves us in a similar situation that we are in currently. So it's our recommendation that the board amend its previous motion to change that parameter to appoint for the remainder of the term and not simply to the spring election in 2026. to appoint for the remainder of the term and not simply to the spring election in twenty twenty six.
Thank you. Questions on that? No. So do we want to talk about the process or just approve this one first?
So if you are wanting to talk about what the process looks like, or if there's any other amendments to the process, you can make it a part of your motion to amend the previous motion. I would recommend that you do it as one, not necessarily multiple. And we can make sure that we can get that all put together.
All right, what Bill is talking about is the fact that we now are up to a dozen applicants. And putting them all on one panel could be difficult with the number of questions that have been designated. So we were recommending that either we find an option that allows them to come in in two panels, or we find another way to do it and maybe minimize some of the questions, so. I would, I would agree to doing something because I think it'll be hard on the applicants. And frankly, the board attention by the end of eight questions for twelve applicants would be extensive. So I would ask your opinion on that before we move forward with our motion. Any comments? Yes, Colleen?
I think you're absolutely right that there isn't going to be much of an attention span and it probably doesn't do well by the candidates coming in later in the process. When we've been sitting through how many hours already? So if we're gonna not have a cutoff in candidates we're gonna interview, then perhaps we should limit the questions to what, three? Is that too few?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of comments here. So currently, we have originally thought about having eight to ten questions. We can dial that down to to five. I think five rate of five would give a good idea of who the candidate is, what, you know, how they go through their their decision making process and their character. That's for you to establish. So there's a couple of things that we can change in that, you know, we had allocated about two minutes per per answer per question. So at twelve candidates, two minutes each, you're talking thirty minutes per per question. This is a special meeting start at five, starting at five. So if we want to try to aim for that two and a half hours, two hours to three hours, and those are the parameters that we should look at. I do know that there was some requests here on the availability of a of candidates being in the same room when the questions are asked and kind of what the process is for asking questions because there's concerns about folks copying each other's answers or providing the same answers as often seen at at public forums. You know, so that that's potentially an option. I think it would be challenging to kind of separate them into a room and or limit their access to what is a public meeting. State that you state that the the meeting has to be accessible to folks who want to listen to it. So we just have to be careful about that. Go ahead.
You gotta be more more than careful. You can't do it. You can't kick people out of the meeting for any reason unless you have a justified closed session, which this wouldn't allow for.
Thank you. That's why we have you, Al.
So if 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 it's the board's desire to to cut down the time to something that is bearable, I would say, you know, we take a look at the number of questions, we take a look at the time allotted to provide an answer. And, you know, we're just gonna have to tough it out. You know, it's a good thing that we have as many candidates that are wanting to serve on the board. But then we, you know, need to do our our work here and kind of sit through it.
All right, questions, comments, thoughts? Jan?
I am definitely definitely for the reduction in questions. I think that we all can first of all see the information that all the applicants provided, and there's a lot there. And we do have a lot of great applicants that have come forward. It's going to be a difficult decision, I think. But I'm definitely for the reduction of questions for that reason and for just the time that's going to be involved. I when Bill and I were talking today, I had asked, how are you going to determine who goes first, who goes last? And he said it was going to be, we have a computer system that's going to be like a lottery draw. I guess it'd be the easiest way to explain it, to determine that, which I thought that was perfect. But then going on to, we've had some discussion about splitting it possibly into two separate sessions. I would, I wouldn't want to do that. I would feel that that would be unfair to the first set of applicants.
And Al just told me we couldn't.
Oh, and we can't do that anyway. Well, we wouldn't be able to hold the information. We could have two meetings or two. I guess it doesn't matter. We don't want, we don't want it anyways.
Yeah. You you could separate it into two sessions, but each, the entire pool of candidates could see, you know, the the first session. One option would be to ask different questions, the second group, but then you've got you're you're trying to compare answers to different questions for the same candidates and that's, you know, got problems too.
Okay. Well, yes, Kelly?
I just have one other question. I, it was brought to my attention today by one of the applicants that they will be out of town on the thirtieth. And I was wondering your thoughts on the possibility of allowing a candidate to interview via Zoom?
Your thoughts? I'm I'm reluctant to do that, but I guess it's not impossible. Colleen? She's concentrating.
I would prefer everybody be in person. We do let department heads attend via Zoom, trustees can attend via Zoom if necessary. My preference would be in person.
Okay. Alicia?
I I think my preference would be in person as well.
Mine also.
So in person it is. Okay. All right, well, then I would entertain a motion that includes the reduction in questions. I can't hear a word you're saying.
The number of questions wasn't part of the original motion.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm sorry. As I said, bad ears. So I would entertain a motion, one, to approve an appointment for the whole term. And two, to change the process a little bit to make sure we can get through to all of the candidates. And what language would be best for us to do that, Al? Just to, we don't have to set the number, but just just to reduce the number of questions.
I I don't think there's anything in the motion that needs to be changed aside from the term that you're
Okay, so then Bill will work on questions with us, so. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to appoint for the rest of the term that Rebecca resigned on and not to hold the election.
I would make a motion that the, to amend the motion regarding the process of, or, let me back up. I would like to amend the motion that was passed at the last meeting that the term is limited until twenty twenty six. And extend that to the actual end of the term, which is April of twenty twenty seven.
Very good.
So any new trustee being seated for that empty seat will serve until April of twenty twenty seven.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or comment? If not, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Call for names.
Oh, is there any opposition? Everyone said yes, so I didn't. Is there any opposition? No, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to nine point two, discussion and possible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash zero nine four, excuse me. A resolution designating veterans only parking stalls in the village parking facilities.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
A moment of discussion? Just so it doesn't just set vacant when there are disabled people can't find a parking spot.
There's no provision that allows us to enforce this in any way, shape or form. So it's kind of on an honor system, and if somebody wants to park there, there's not a lot we can do about it.
Okay.
You know, and I think folks from the Legion are and are comfortable with that. I understand that. There's not a lot to it, but it's a a nice gesture to put forward.
Okay, well, then we have a motion and a second. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine point three, discussion and possible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash zero nine five. A resolution approving a second amendment to the intergovernmental cost sharing agreement for staffing and administrative services to the Community Development Authority of the Village of DeForest by the Village of DeForest. Alex?
Can you pull up the memo, Bill, too? So I feel like Carol kind of stole the thunder here in the budget presentation in terms of discussing the financial implications of this. But as she mentioned, so the CDA has had a couple of different things happen from our staffing perspective. Our in third party management, we've kind of slimmed down to a point where the shared staff involvement is significantly less. So this would be an amendment to sort of reflect how we're currently operating, removing the on-call component, both from public services and then from our guys as well, or from Jay, our property manager. So they wouldn't be involved in on-call services at the facilities. Obviously, that's being handled by a third-party management company now, one of those. And then the cost reduction is effectively, instead of splitting it out between the two divisions that the CDA has, consolidating that into one monthly payment, which would be a fifteen hundred dollar reduction monthly. So that's kind of the long and short of it. In the packets, there's a red line version and then the clean version as well. And the memo has a long bulleted list of stuff, which, if you want to pull that up, we can talk through changes. Any questions on that?
And I just add, I reminded people I saw when Carol was talking about having sold five oh nine. Those people are still all there. They will have the ability to move to the new building when it is built, so they're all in place.
And we are still, the CDA still is managing that facility, but we're getting compensated equivalent there.
By the new owners. Great. With that, I would ask, are there a motion to approve? Unless there are questions?
I did have a question. Who bought five oh nine?
So the new owners, it's an investment group, it's Gardner Millis LLC. They actually owned a property that the CDA purchased as part of the new development and did a real estate exchange to then purchase five oh nine.
They had the apartment buildings behind the old liquor store.
Okay. So they'll keep it as apartments still?
Yes, yep.
Thank you, Alex.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve unless there's more question.
I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the CDA.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item nine point four, discussion and possible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash zero nine six. Resolution authorizing the village president to sign an agreement with Parket Texture for the design and bidding of park improvements in twenty twenty six. There was paper or in your packet. And there's Mr. Blough. I was looking for it. I was like, where is he? Very.
I have a quick PowerPoint if you want to see. So we did a study all summer. We had surveyed our village residents through Park and Connect and then on Engage to Forest. Looking for feedback from residents on the parks that we had in mind for improvements and or ultimately new building of a park if there it was none there previously. And then for them to kind of rank in order which park they wanted to see first, second, third, fourth, and down the line through seven. So we had a survey participation overview. There was about one hundred and fifty two contributors. There was total contributions from one hundred and eighty two different people. So that means some people could have done more than one contribution, right? Eighty seven percent of the respondents lived in the Village of DeForest. This went from May twenty second through September twenty ninth, so there's an ample amount of time for folks to participate in the survey. And we had an event at Dale Jenkins Park. We had one at Fireman's Park, and then the last one is at Western Green as well. We're invited from residents from anywhere in the village, but predominantly in some of those other places to to show up and and be there. Fireman's Park was far and away our biggest event. Dale Jenkins garnered the most people after that. And then Western Green was a little slower, but we still had some folks who took the time to engage there, so. Most of that engagement, though, was done on EngageToForest.com. So I ranked these. I'm presenting them in the order by which they were voted on by the residents for the parks to happen in which order, right? So the first one they wanted to see was Conservancy Commons Park, both the splash pad and a layout refresh. So the splash pad would be shrunken down a little bit in this picture. There, it's kind of that half moon crescent that is more to the left side of the picture. And they really liked Concept Three was most preferred, which is not really a splash pad. It's more of an activity tower, so it's got slides components to it, nothing like the Dells. We're not going crazy with slides, but you know, there may be three feet, four feet off the ground, just to give kids a different play structure, something different than just a regular splash pad. They also liked the layout. Concept Three was most preferred. So that's really adding a play structure just to the top end of the, what's currently in the playground there, which is the darker brown shade. You'll see just above it, I think it's a grayish blue color that would indicate in addition to that play area. So those popular elements are slide and water feature, improved playground equipment, nature-based and some shaded areas, right, to provide some cover for parents who are there watching their kids do the things or even kids get a spot for respite. They really wanted the residents emphasize keeping parks visually distinct from other parks. So this one makes it, you know, every park is just a little bit different and they're not a carbon copy of the same thing throughout the community. The second most popular park that was that they wanted to do would be Rivers Turn Phase Three Park. We don't have a name for it because that's an awful lot for a kid to say or even an adult, so we will be looking to probably come up with a name for that park. So Concept Two was favored by residents to the tune of seventy nine percent. Here, the top feedback themes was a desire for full basketball or multi-sport courts, which is indicated in the lower right quadrant of that park, right? So there's mixed-use courts there. The basketball are kind of two half courts side by The basketball are kind of two half courts side by side, but then there'd be an overlay of pickleball and or tennis courts. And then the big green space is an area for open space, free play, right? Kids can toss a frisbee around, play catch with dad or mom, or brothers and sisters, or just, you know, general messing around. But then we could do some recreational programming in that space as well. With that, with the green space, we wanted to add some privacy buffers important to the nearby residents, so there'd be some trees plantings that would happen to help she um secure that space a little bit. And then interest in restrooms and accessible paths. So there is a path already designated. It's along the side of that house that you see up in the top left corner. That part, that trail's there. We'd extend the trail through the park alongside of the playground, which is adjacent to the the basketball mixed-use sport court thing. Within there'd be a accessible or probably some sort of a pavilion there. Restrooms would probably be accommodated through the use of porta-potties, and we might look at some screening opportunities if that was so included there. So this, the first two that I covered Conservancy and Rivers Turn, Carol alluded to earlier, she also stole my thunder. So the first, the top three parks we had planned to do for this year. So the third one yeah, is Shane O'Donnell Park. So Shane O'Donnell Park is an existing park. It's right across from Western Green on River Road. There is play amenities already there, but this neighborhood had been pretty vocal in probably two, last two or three years, asking for some more things to do, especially for that gap that's kind of often missed, the teen tweens kind of stuff. So Concept One was preferred by eighty-one percent of the respondents. So and through this process, a new amenity came to light, which is footsall. Long and short of it, it's soccer, but it's on an asphalt court, right? So there's not sliding tackles that are happening. It's really a game that's designed to work on foot skills for kids and how they handle the ball, right? The nearest footsall court to us is actually downtown Madison. I think it's Penn Park in Madison, if I'm not mistaken, that has a footsall court. But it's, there's kids that I've seen play footsall over here at the basketball courts here. This group that is extremely interested in this has been doing footsall type events or practices, so to speak, at Western Green Park on the basketball court that's there, adjacent to the parking lot. However, they stationed parents along the retention pond to keep the ball from going in the retention pond. And if the ball is kicked off the court, they have to go chase it, and it takes time away. So a footsall court tends to have walls, although you don't play it off a wall. It's not like an indoor soccer. That's just to keep there, and there's no throw-ins. Everything's done with your feet. But it came up quite a bit here at Shane O'Donnell, so we would look to incorporate that into that basketball court, I believe, is where we would look at doing that. So we we are working with Parket Texture. They're the ones that designed these concepts for us. Now we'll refine them further with them, and that's what you'll be voting on at the end of this. So there was a support for restrooms, playground expansion, and some shade trees. So again, we, I don't know, the restroom would probably again be served with a porta potty. So when we get into putting into restrooms, actual physical restrooms, all of our parks typically have not paid an impact fee for contributions to Madison Metropolitan Sewer District, right? They have that connection. And when you're dealing with a park that's an acre, two acres, five acres, that price tag goes up really dramatically. So we have a couple of options as as the village. We can either do use porta-potties, right? And put them in because they're there just for that that purpose, for the summertime traditionally. Or we could go into zoning and CSMing the land and narrowing down the scope by which we would have to pay an impact fee to connect to MMSD. So for the time being, here we'd be looking at porta-potties. But there would be, again, probably a shade structure, kind of like the pavilion over here, the twenty by twenty kind of a building that gives a congregation space some shade respite. You could have an event there. There was a suggestion for dual-use winter ice rink option. That'd be great if we actually had winters anymore. We've tried repeatedly for many, many times to create ice rinks. We did one out here. Even Sunfish Pond, last year we were finally able to open it briefly. But even, you know, natural ponds don't freeze solid enough to to have ice skating. We do have luckily a great amenity now down by the DeForest yards that Sam referenced earlier, that they've had started ice skating practices or lessons, that's the word I'm looking for, happening down there that our rec department's putting on. So if we ever get winters back, we could maybe consider that, but at this point in time, that's kind of what we'll do.
The more we say that, we're likely to get smacked.
Well, if we can get the winter here so we could stop construction season, that'd be great. The fourth park, which we won't be doing this year, but the remaining of these parks will probably be somewhere in the next four to five years, right? So if you recall, our capital outdoor recreation program that we put together has a five-year expand, look ahead. So some of these parks will be coming in that timeframe after that. Dale Jenkins, though, was the fourth rated park by which to do some stuff. We've done the trail through Dale Jenkins Park. There is a play equipment there. This one contemplated putting in an actual restroom facility, another shelter, expanding the playground to provide playground stuff for younger children. And those are some of the top requested features. And then some yard games would also be put in there. So kind of like we have over here ping pong and or cornhole bags, that kind of stuff. We would look to put some of those kind of amenities, baches and whatnot. Key themes are restrooms and seating are high priorities. Again, the expand the play options for younger children. And there's mixed opinions about yard games and noise impacts, but it's a park. So I mean, we do have some big open fields that we put recreational programming on, so continue to use that park for that. The fifth park is Baki Nelson Conservancy Park. This one, the preferred concept was Concept Two, seventy-nine percent of those respondents. There was a strong support for natural play features, trails, and accessibility, right? So you see a lot of trails kind of cutting through in the yellow. This has five, six play nodes in it, and then a center gathering place that would have a pavilion in it. The feedback was emphasized in preserving trees and wildlife habitat, which is kind of what we want this to do as well. We have finned out a lot of the underbrush there. Our staff has done a great job of doing that while preserving the the more desirable trees. So we'll continue to expand on this. There's a desire for a central shelter and multipath trail connections. This this park is probably going to take a little bit more reflection, so it's I'm actually, this is probably the one I'm the most excited for. That's just my personal opinion, but I think it needs more reflection and to put some good thought to it. So we're making these play notes accessible for people of all ages spectrum, right? So the idea behind it is more of a sensory one, as well as there's a path connection that would connect to Stevenson, the trail there with a bridge. So a bridge going over the river is not an easy task. We have to work with the DNR to gain approval and things. So this park might even be done over a multitude of phases. But there is a parking structure as well that's added, which would be behind the dental clinic. And then restroom facility is also here. Colleen, you have a question?
Yeah, this might seem kind of lame, but Baki hyphen Nelson.
It's not necessarily the name. That's just, that's how we identify it internally. We would have to come up with something.
Wasn't Dr. Baki's first name Nelson?
David Baki. I don't know the senior, but the
Senior? Wasn't his first name Nelson?
His last name is Baki.
I know that. What's his first name?
Nelson.
Yeah. Okay, that's why I asked. Sure if we were naming it after somebody that we got it right.
No, we have not named that. It's just kind of, that's the, that land was previously owned by Baki, and that's so.
It makes sense. It's right behind, yeah, thanks.
Ziggy Field, again, not the name, the adjacent park. This would be, there'd be, Concept One was preferred by seventy-five percent of the respondents. So this is a community skate park concept to the right side of the screen and that sliver of the park above the the baseball field. Predominantly skate park or pump track kind of, or not a pump track, scooter park kind of thing, those tricks and whatnot. And then the lower section would be for a playground set. So there was some mixed concerns about traffic noise and proximity to residences. The residences that are most impacted are the ones to the north of the proposed park. There's a multitude of multifamily homes there. There is a multifamily across the street. That's that Red Barn element that's in the village of Windsor. There was suggestions for fencing and ensuring ADA accessibility, so those are certainly things that we would take into account. But this park is that was built, given to us by the developer at about a four percent slope. So it makes it somewhat hard to program, and I think this gives us the best opportunity to fill a couple amenities in our community. As a skate park has often been requested for many, many years, you know, even back when I was on the board, so. I think this is the final one, the Northern Industrial Park. So Porter Pipe and Supply is this big rectangle building here, and this area is all of theirs. So we're talking about this parcel of land here. The dog park is down in this end. This encompasses Concept Two is favored by eighty-three percent of the popular, of the participants. The ideas were extend trails and some scenic overlooks, so the Ahara River runs along at this arch, right? So there's a node here to kind of stop and look out over the river. I think there's one here. There's a natural spring that's off of this era segment here. So this path kind of winds. There's a pump track here in the middle with some picnic area down below. We'd expand the parking here, so the dog park is a really highly desirable amenity. Parking is can be challenging there at times, so we'd expand that parking lot. And then this would also include the village creating a nursery, so we would start to grow our own trees there that we could then repurpose as street trees in other areas in the community. Trail that would run through there and connect it. There's pretty limited what we can do because it's along the river, the flood plain, so we can't really put anything super permanent into the ground because we have to allow things to run free flow. So I think this is the best use for that kind of a park there. So overall, community feedback was a broad support for adding amenities that serve all ages. There's a high interest in restroom shelters and shared seating, shaded seating, I should say. The residents really value natural space, trees, and accessibilities. There's some concerns about parking noise, overdevelopment in residential areas, and a desire for parks with unique features, so natural play area, footsall, pump track. So some newer amenities that our community doesn't have that I think we've heard an awful lot about throughout it, so.
Thank you. That's a lot of information. Your committee discussed it last night, Jan. Was there any comment or addition you wanted to make?
Everybody was in agreement with what staff was recommending, so we really didn't have anything additional.
I wish we could have gotten more people in the community, only because it's also on the survey. It's also a good way to advertise and for folks to learn what we're doing, so. With that, then, you would be looking for action on the resolution that was in our packets to sign the agreement with Parket Texture. I said that word right twice.
Correct.
And so I would entertain a motion to sign the agreement. Yes, Colleen?
Can I just make a comment and then I'll be happy to make a motion? Parks are very important to this community. You did a survey that got a decent number of people who responded. You took their input and incorporated it into the plans. In other words, citizens indicated their interests, and they pretty much got what they wanted. So kudos to everybody who's involved in doing that. And then I will make a motion for authorizing the village president to sign the agreement with Parket Texture for the design and building of the park improvements.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a second. Any further comment? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good work, guys. All right, item nine point five. Discussion and possible action regarding an amendment to the real estate acquisition and a development agreement between American Packaging Corp. And the village of DeForest. Excuse me. The village board may convene in the closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute, section nineteen point eight five one E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. Village Board may reconvene into open session and take action on the subject matter discussed. Okay. Well, with that, I think they're discussing what they want us to do.
So we would suggest that you postpone these closed session items until you get through the rest of the agenda. So the folks that are joining us don't have to wait until after closed session if they want to understand what the results are, and then come back and then do the closed session.
Okay.
So we have reports, and then we also have the appointment for the ETZ.
Okay, so we can, we can do those other things. I'm just making sure that we get this done in the right order. All right, well, let's go to item ten then. Is everyone okay with with doing that? Do I need a motion? I can, we can do it without a motion.
You can do a plain unanimous consent, so that's fine.
Okay. It's amazing when there's four of us, not five, that goes. Communications, your check register was in your packet. The committee commission and board reports. I would ask for an updated regarding the DeForest area library. We don't currently have a representative on the library, so unless Bill knows of something or anybody else, we will go on. We're working on that appointment. The Forest Public Safety Commission. That would be Colleen.
Yes, it is. We had our meeting and we approved a upper discussions.
A what?
An operator's license.
Okay. The Forest Area Community and Senior Center. That would be you, Jan.
The construction on the new parking lot and entrance into the community center is supposed to be started this week, maybe tomorrow. It's all staked out, ready to go. What else happened? We have been going through our strategic plan further and made some good headway there. We have a separate committee, and they have put in a lot of time and a lot of work, and it is really organized. And the information is easy to understand, and it it looks really good. So that's it.
Good. And where is the new entrance going to be?
Okay, it's off Highway V, and then it's going to be more to the east of where the current one was.
Okay.
Which was that four, at the four-way stop, you know, you turn right and
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be before that.
All right. Let's move on to CDA. You want to do that?
Sure, I'd say the big ticket item was we awarded a contract for, or awarded a bid for demolition for the CDA's redevelopment properties.
So soon you're going to see the old liquor store and the car wash come down. So that's the next, next move there. Planning and zoning commission. Jim is gone. Brandy, is there anything? Oh, that's right, next week you meet. All right. Public Services Committee.
You saw it all here tonight. This, this ancient organization definitions and that situation, and then the parkature stuff that we just went through.
Great. All right, and DeForest Windsor Fire and EMS. We were doing budget. We were working on.
The usual stuff that continues budget, little bit like in station, nothing else standing there. Big thing, I guess, was the SAFER grants that
Oh, that's right.
We got from the federal government, which gives them, in essence, four.
We got from the federal government, which gives them, in essence, four employees for the price of one. Granted, the village does need to pick up the cost somewhere down the road, but it's a pretty impressive thing that they pulled off getting that grant.
It's a nationally competitive grant, so we were real pleased to get it. Frankly, one of the things I think that works in our favor with some of the grants they've gotten is our joint community fire district that's being encouraged around the country, so.
I was just looking at my notes, Jan, to be, to make a little more sense here. As the chief said, all four people that he wanted over four years are funded by that money in one year. So that's pretty impressive stuff. They're very proud of themselves and they should be.
Thank you. All right, well, committee and commission and board members were in your packet. And I would then move to item twelve point one, DCCBA bill. I don't think there's anything. There is a meeting that we're hosting by Zoom on November twelfth. Yeah. Twelve point two, appointment to extraterritorial zoning, Burke, and extraterritorial zoning Vienna. And don't we need to approve more, Mike, for P and Z?
We did a meeting.
Good, thank you. Glad I have you. All right. Well, we are recommending the appointment of Mike Brogie. You might remember that, that those positions need to be filled by someone who is on planning and zoning and not a trustee. So we were recommending, we've always had the same person on both. And so we were recommending that he be appointed. I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So now, you want to go back? Okay. Now we'll go back.
So a little bit of instruction here. You've announced going to closed session potentially for nine point five. I'll go out and explain as part of the memo, the requirement to go into closed session. And if this board wants to go into closed session, to consider it. If you do not want to convene into closed session or you can take, then, then we can move on to the next item. If you are proposing to go into closed session or the subject, then we ask that you also announce going into closed session for nine point six. Does that make sense?
You're going to have a discussion in open session about the, the basics of the agreement and what the issues are and what the parameters are. If you decide that you need to go into closed session to discuss the negotiation strategy on those issues, then what Bill is suggesting is that you also announce the next item before going into closed session. Make a single motion to go into closed session for both of those reasons and
Oh, that makes sense. Thank you. All right, so takes a village to run a meeting, so thank you. All right, guys, then Bill, do you want to open this up and present or do people want to just rely on their packets? Why don't you?
I, I, I can present. So the village has had a real estate acquisition and development agreement with American Packaging Company since two thousand and sixteen. Since then, they've developed the property and constructed up to three hundred thousand square feet, which per the agreement has taken them through a three. What was their obligations as stated in their agreement. So remaining is phase four. Phase four takes them to four hundred thousand square feet and has a construction deadline by end of December twenty twenty-six. They've reached out and, and informed me that they are not going to be able to reach or accomplish that obligation. And in jeopardy is the potential loss of a credit back for the, the purchase price of the property, the village previously owned the property, and a development expansion grant tied to construction completion. Now, in their request, they have asked that we extend it by four years. And four years is significant because the agreement had required them to get to three hundred thousand square feet by twenty twenty-four. Actually got there in twenty twenty. So we've, we've realized or have been receiving tax amounts for the full three hundred thousand square feet since that twenty twenty. So those are some of the terms that would need to be considered. If you're wanting to discuss those terms more in detail and deliberating and negotiating the total agreement, then I would suggest that you move into closed session. If you're okay with extending it to four years, you can instruct Al and I to draft an agreement for you to take a look at those items at the next meeting. That wouldn't require a closed session. When not.
Okay. Questions of Bill? So my understanding from what you just said is that this extension will not hurt or take resources away from the village. It will allow them to complete their expansion and they've been a good company here.
It extends the village's obligations in accordance to their obligation. Technically, those incentives, if they are not able to complete construction by twenty twenty-six. And so if you are comparing dollars to dollars, then essentially that amount that they stand to lose in twenty, after twenty twenty-six would go back to the tax increment district. And so technically, the, the, the TID would be recognizing the additional increments if they were to develop later, they would have lost their incentive.
But overall, it is
It doesn't, it, it doesn't provide an additional obligation to the village.
Okay, that's, that's my question. Thank you for understanding. All right, other questions? I don't know that we have a need to go into closed on this one.
I don't think so. Sure, you said they made their three hundred thousand square feet by twenty twenty?
That's correct.
And they had until twenty twenty-four to do that?
That's correct.
I, I would be in, in favor of giving them the extension. They've been a really good business for the village. Why punish them? As long as we're not losing anything.
I would agree with that.
That's my two cents from a non-financial businessperson's mind.
Do, do you want us to just make our motion now? We're in open session.
We still need to draft a document.
Okay.
Bring that document back.
And then we'll look at the document, but I think we're pretty much concur that it's a good move.
Setting direction for us too.
Right, thank you. So we'll bring back the document for approval. And with that, we'll move to item nine point six, which will require closed section. Discussion and possible action regarding the village administrator's annual performance evaluation. The village board may convene into closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility. So thank you all for attending. I gotta get my folder out. I'm sitting. It's hot stuff.
I would like to make a motion that we go into closed session.
We have a motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
No.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Rhonda?
Okay.
Rhonda, all that's on the website.
Trustee Little? Trustee Stefan Haggenhan?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
President Cahill Wolfram?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, we are back in open session. And I would entertain, unless there's other business that lawfully comes before the board, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Oh. I thought, yeah. She's quiet. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I get tired of being the one who tells people.